Good evening and welcome to the Monmouth City Council meeting for Tuesday, January the 8th. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Phyllis.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Milligan.
Oh, Mayor.
And Counselor Bells.
Here.
Still.
So tonight, we've got some special guests to help us with the flag salute. They're the members of the Girl Scout Troop 10-601, whose leader is Jessica Miller. And we also are going to have an American Sign Language interpreter, Sherri Olmer is here tonight, too. So if the Girl Scouts are ready?
Please remove all hats. Color guard, attention. Color guard, forward march. Halt. Color guard, prepare to post the colors.
Please join the pledge with us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, and to the republics where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard? Color guard, return to ranks. The audience may now be seated.
Thank you very much for that. Future leaders of America. And with that, it brings us to the consent calendar. There's two items tonight on that, the council meeting for December 4th, and the council work session minutes from the same night, December 4th. They have a motion.
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, those pass. That brings us to our reports, our year-ending reports. So Counselor Johnson?
Right up to. The story, we met on January the 2nd, and we elected, the elected chair was Nita Wilson. Vice Chair was James Messdon, I think is how you pronounce it. Have a consulting service come, have started already for the intensive level surveys, and that's the homes that are in the community that we want to get on a historic calendar, kind of, or on a program. That was on there, and they're going to meet with the, they're going to, this group that's intensive group will come and meet with the commission soon, and I think they have three meetings altogether during their consulting time. It's a six-month period that they're on, a six, seven-month period. And that'll be done. And then, the railroad sign was approved finally, and that's been left up to Susan now, and Suzanne, she can go ahead and get it printed up, and then we'll get the sign put up at the amphitheater area sometime. And the planning commission met on the 2nd of the 19th, and we elected Steve Howard, Chairman, and Scott Campbell, Vice Chair. Had a hearing on the reader board sign on, at the new Life Ministries on Jackson. This is a reader board that, you know, it's just electronic. So it'll be on that, probably come before the council, I don't know. And then also, we had discussed changes to the short rentals of town, that's, you know, something similar, bed wrecked, but smaller. And that was approved, and everybody went over that, to forward it to the city council on the re-approved program. And then they're also on the, that was, and then they also went over the program of housing and residential land needs somewhat analysis, and trying to work on that and bring it forward. That's my report.
All right. Counselor Silvernagle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Monmouth Senior Advisory Board met on December 18th. They had a volunteer appreciation dessert that was on the 20th at 4:00 PM. They gave out medical supplies, so probably some of you knew that already, some probably didn't. They had 60 pieces of equipment that they farmed out basically between June and November. Upcoming, they have a couple of things that some of the seniors may want to sign up for. They've got an aging mastery course. It's 90 minutes long, 10 weeks. Northwest Senior Disability Services got a grant that they're doing it for free for participants. Starts the last January, last, on the 30th, basically the last Wednesday in January at 10:00 AM. Another one they've got coming up on January 23rd is, at 11:00 AM, they got a legal and financial planning on elder care, or elder law. So they do lots of that kind of stuff, but I thought I'd kind of point out those couple. And then we'll have rental charges in front of the council this evening. So that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Counselor Carey?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the Minnetonka Board did not meet in a regular meeting in December, so I really have no report. And however, the next meeting that would normally be in January has been pushed back to February 7th because of some conflicts. So February 7th, 7:30 AM, in the Minnetonka Situation Room. So that's there on the Minnetonka campus. So that, and that concludes my report.
All right, thanks. Are there any community announcements? Hearing none, we're going to move on to our presentations. And so this time, we're going to swear in the new counselors and some presentations for the outgoing council members. So Phyllis, I'll turn this back over to you.
Okay, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
John Carey. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Monmouth.
Of the city of Monmouth.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of city councillor.
Of city councillor.
Of the city of Monmouth.
Of the city of Monmouth.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, push. Come on. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
The Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States. And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Monmouth.
Of the city of Monmouth.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
Of the city of Monmouth.
Of the city of Monmouth.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations.
I want to make a presentation before.
Where'd you come from?
Congratulations on becoming the new mayor of Monmouth. One of the things that happened in Monmouth in 2017 was something I wish I could have happen every year, was the solar eclipse, and that comes very, quite infrequently over Monmouth. One of the things that we did as a city was create a time capsule that's over at Main Street Park, so that we make sure that it gets opened on the date of the next solar eclipse, which is June 25th, 2196, which maybe none of the scouts might be here. We want to make sure that it gets opened on the date, so as part of that, helping remember that, I created this so that we could pass it from mayor to mayor until that date, and then make sure that that gets opened. And as my last act as mayor, I would like to present you with the gavel.
I shall, thank you. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it. I think we can all say, after my four years on council, and my colleagues here, and certainly our staff in the room, is the most people who have ever been in this room not mad at us. So thank you very much for coming, particularly bringing young people, right? Because young people don't get this. We need them, and I'm so glad they're here. You saw maybe earlier, all of the former living mayors, except two were with us tonight, and so I'm really, really proud to join their company. Paul Evans, Bill Horner, Larry Dalton, John Oberst, and Steve Milligan. So thank you, gentlemen, very much for the work you've done, and for making this a great place to serve. And so I would like to, first of all, somebody who replaced me on council, and I was hoping we'd get to work together, so if I could have you join me up here, Royal Johnson, and don't try the John Carey thing where you jump over there.
Only a few can do that.
So the mayor, the city council, and the city staff would like to recognize Royal Johnson, city council 2015 to 2018, this time, right? You've certainly been here before, but for your hard work, your wisdom, and your countless contributions rendered while serving as a Monmouth city councillor, thank you for your dedication to the citizens of Monmouth.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I hope I've been able to change some things, brought some things to the center, and I really appreciated all the people that volunteered in the city to make it go. Thank you very much for your time.
So Steve and I have served on council together. We've served on a lot of other committees, commissions. He's been a very faithful member of the Central School District School Board, done a lot of other work in our community. And again, not your first time in this position, getting this kind of plaque, but if I read the work you've done this most recent time, and then, thank you very much for learning leadership, for teaching leadership, and for the work I know you're going to continue to do.
All right, thanks.
Right? Because this is a team sport.
Right.
So the city council and staff recognize Stephen V. Milligan, mayor, 2017-18, city council, 2013-16, budget committee, 2011-2012, along with planning, 2011-2012, most recent. In appreciation of your hard work, your wisdom, and your countless contributions rendered while serving as the mayor of Monmouth, during your tenure as mayor of Monmouth continued to flourish, your passion for and commitment to the betterment of Monmouth and the city was always evident. Thank you for your dedication to the citizens.
But I just want to say, 16 years ago tonight, I was getting sworn in for the first time as a councillor. Service that I've had the privilege to do in this city with the citizens of this city have been immeasurable. Enough of you have been around here that in 20, in 2000, Main Street didn't look at all like it does today. Our police station doesn't look at all like it does today. Our Power and Light will soon look a whole lot better than it did in 2000. Our senior center looks a lot better, and we've enhanced the library. And it's really been a pleasure to be here, to help participate and make decisions in the process of improving a city in ways that are going to be here for countless generations in front of us. That's why I'm excited to see, like, the Girl Scouts are here, and especially the little ones, that we've created a city that has a future for them. And so that's what I hope that the rest of our legacy is, is that we've created a future for the future. Thanks.
While I take my place, I'd like our city staff to stand up and be recognized. These are the people that do the work, that gets us all the glory up here. So I'd like to recog, well, up here at front, so our city attorney, Lane Shetterly, our city manager, Scott McClure, our city inspector, we have Larry Thornton with us today, and Barbara, your last name?
Hogan.
Barbara Hogan, our senior center director, who I'm just going to be excited to get the pleasure to work with. Suzanne Duffner is here, she is our community development director. Russ Cooper, Public Works. Chuck Thurman, who gets to move into the nice new Power and Light building here pretty quick, the superintendent.
It's Marsh.
Okay, it's coming, it's coming, we're trying. Our electric utility. Kriste Oberst is our librarian, so those of you who benefit from all the work that she and her staff do. And Chief Talon, Darrell Talon, our police chief. And we have a lot of other dignitaries in the room. We have with us the superintendent of the Central School District, Jennifer Cabista. We have the chief of our joint fire department, Polk County Fire District 1, Ben Stangie. And from the university, representing the university this evening, Anna Karaman, who's the vice president of finance administration. So.
Don't forget Phyllis.
Phyllis Bowman. Phyllis, our boss.
Not you, right.
Phyllis, the boss of us all. Thank you, Phyllis Bowman. And thank you again, there are many of you in this room who have volunteered and do volunteer your time to make this city great, so thank you all so much and for your support of us, it's really critical. I'd like to also thank my husband, Stephen Keller, my mother, Shirley Koontz, and my daughter, Jordan Heidi, and her husband, Travis, and some other family members that are here tonight. And for those of you who brought family, thanks for giving up your time, letting us do this. This is, this is a lot, and we appreciate your support. So that's kind of the formal part of the meeting, the fun part. We do have to get to work, so you are welcome to stay and listen to some reports that we are going to give. Our city manager will give a report, and have room for citizen comments, and then we'll also be doing a couple of public hearings tonight that take a little bit more time and energy. So if those of you that need to go now is fine, otherwise, we'll have another little break here in a little bit, if you have to step out. But thank you so much for being here. All right, this is a little more normal.
It's a crowded meeting.
It was, it was. So thank you for your patience, those of you who are waiting for other stuff. We'll start with our 2019 reports, and the first thing is the mayor's report, and now that I've been the mayor for eight minutes, I'm trying to think what I can report. I actually would just like to thank Steve Milligan again. There are several bodies of which our mayor is a member or represents in different capacities around the county and the region, and Mayor Milligan was very generous in getting me introduced to some of those folks and getting connected with them right away, so I really appreciate that, and this warm welcome, so thank you. Our second bit of business is to elect a council president, and that is actually a statutory requirement in our charter. And anyone can serve as the council president, that person is, takes over in the event that the mayor is not available. And we've actually had a couple of situations where the last woman who served as mayor was council president and took office when the mayorship opened up. She was, did not serve long, and she had, has expressed to people, she doesn't think it really counts. I think it really counts, so it's a very important role, and at this time, I will accept nominations for council president.
Darren did a fine job. Darren has done a fine job. Last term, and so I would nominate him again.
Okay, it's been, Darren's been nominated as council president, and there's a second for that. John, were you seconding his nomination?
Oh, I was going to, do we second nomination? Don't need to, but that's all right.
I'd be happy to second.
Okay, we don't have to.
Okay, because if I weren't seconding it, I'd be nominating, so.
Okay, I thought you were competing.
Yeah, it's double nomination.
It's not sure, a double nomination. Are there any other nominations for council president? All right, hearing none. Mistress, Counselor Silvernagle, would you accept the appointment of council president?
I would.
All right, so all in favor of Darren Silvernagle as council president, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
All abstaining.
And I don't ever get to vote, so, there you go. Thank you very much. So Darren, longest-serving member of the council, will continue on as council president, and so I'll try to be there, but you saw my boss here tonight, so if I'm ever running late, you're starting this puppy off, so thank you very much. Our next bit of business is actually our city manager's report, so.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. McClure.
Thank you. Yeah, so a couple things going on, the Carl's Jr. project is going well. Originally, they had a target of January 26th, which, yeah, no, it'll be a little bit longer than that, but they're still making good progress. They're doing well on that project. And then, one that kind of ties into what you'll hear a later agenda item is the S-curve. We have lots of activity, lots of things going on there, lots of inquiries of interested parties that like to be in that complex, so there's been a lot of good work on that. Our city hall project, that's one of the council goals, is to figure out how do we deal with the city hall building and then volunteer hall. The architect firm that we've hired to do is coming out for their site visit next week, and so they'll be walking the entire site, you know, scanning, doing mapping, meeting with all the relevant departments, trying to identify what our key space needs are. Then they'll go forth and start looking at design options at that point. Our water filtration system is almost operational. Actually, most of the components are in. Actually, next week, we're going to start the heavy testing and getting the staff training on it, so more than likely, within about two weeks, we'll be on the new system. So that'll be all done. And then, a couple things that are kind of nice during the holiday season is that they had the food drive challenge. Monmouth won last year, and won again this year, so. Our police department did a good lead on that, good support from the rest of the city. I think that's a real nice activity and something to get involved in. Another nice one that we do very quietly, which fortunately or unfortunately, in some ways, we do a lot of things quietly in Monmouth, we just do them for the right reasons, and not for recognition a lot of times. There's questions about how you approach that sometimes, but. Our police department actually adopts families. Our police department, out of their own pockets, goes and finds families, donates them, takes care of them, does that. Interesting one that goes kind of part and parcel with that is during the year, they run into all sorts of people on their calls that just are not doing well, and they will go acquire things for them that they need, different things, but same thing, they just do it, and frankly, as the chief notes, he doesn't even know it most of the time, because they aren't asking for any attention. A little different one that cropped up this year is we actually, for the first time, we had somebody come in and say, could I pay off somebody's utility bill in December, so they can have a better Christmas? And we're like, that's obviously somewhat complicated, because how do you identify, how do you make that work, link up people? But we actually kind of on the fly developed a system, and we actually had multiple accounts got paid off. You know, we actually found out one of them, the person posted on Facebook, oh my gosh, someone paid my utility bill. You know, so that worked out really well, so we're going to evolve that, and so if we can get the mechanics down and then make sure we're doing it, it was a random system once we figured out kind of who qualified, but down the road, that could become a broader program. And so this year, we just get it kind of low-key, just to get the kinks worked up, and I think we're going to keep developing that. So that worked out really nice, and then just a note, budget pre-meeting is next Tuesday at 7:00.
Excited. Thank you. And now is the time for citizen comments, so if we have any citizens who had indicated an interest to speak on something on the agenda this evening, or not, and, Phyllis, were any comments turned in to you? Anybody indicating comment? Nope. Did you have something?
Sorry, I signed up on the comment sheet.
Oh, okay. I didn't get it.
He's on the agenda item.
Yes, but you're, you're, yeah, you're on the agenda, so we're going, we'll be hearing from you during public comments on that. Unless you want to talk now, too. Okay, so seeing no other citizen comments, then we're going to move on to our business agenda, and this evening, for your enjoyment, those of you who stuck around, we actually have a couple of public hearings, so a little bit more formal process that we have coming up here to take care of a couple of items. And so I will invite Planning Community Development Director Suzanne Duffner will join us at the table, and.
Oops, I got a little.
Let her get set up.
Listen to that, here, a little PowerPoint. It's just the power. We're all charged up, hopefully that won't be an issue.
Be fine.
Okay, well, good evening, mayor and honorable council members. I'm Suzanne Duffner, Community Development Director, here to give the staff report and read the public hearing statement for Annexation 18-01. So I'm going to go ahead and read that public hearing statement, so bear with me as I read through the legalese here. The public hearing before the Monmouth planning, or for the Monmouth City Council is now open. Are there any declarations of conflict bias or ex parte contact by any members of the city council? Okay, seeing none. Oregon land use law requires several items be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. The applicable substantive criteria upon which this case will be decided are found in the Monmouth City Code, Chapter 18, Point 40, and Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 222. All testimony, evidence, arguments must be directed towards these criteria, other criteria in the Monmouth comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance which you believe applies to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties to this hearing an opportunity to respond to this issue precludes appeal to Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals shall be raised not later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing on the proposal before the city. Such issues shall be raised with and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties to this hearing an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval without sufficient specificity to allow the city or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. The application proceeds with the staff report, next the applicants present their case. Those who would like to speak in support of the application go next, followed by those who are opposed. Then those who are neither for or against the application may speak, and public agencies are also allowed to comment. I'm just asking anybody speaking before the city council to please state their name and address for the record. So basically, what I just read, the shorthand version of that, is that if there's any issue which may be the basis of an appeal on this particular land application, needs to be raised during the public hearing, comment portion of it, to be the basis of an appeal. So with that, I will go ahead and present a little summary of the staff report for Annexation 18-01. This is a property owner-initiated request to annex a parcel that's approximately .4 acres in size. It's located at 839 Warren Street South in South Monmouth, and it's The application proceeds with the staff report. Next, the applicants present their case. Those who would like to speak in support of the application go next, followed by those who are opposed. Then those who are neither for or against the application may speak, and public agencies are also allowed to comment. I'm just asking anybody speaking before the city council to please state their name and address for the record. So basically, what I just read, the shorthand version of that, is that if there's any issue which may be the basis of an appeal on this particular land application, needs to be raised during the public hearing comment portion of it to be the basis of an appeal. So with that, I will go ahead and present a little summary of the staff report for annexation 18-01. This is a property owner-initiated request to annex a parcel that's approximately .4 acres in size. It's located at 839 Warren Street South in South Monmouth, and it's currently designated as low-density residential in our comprehensive plan. Because it's still in the county, it has a county zoning of suburban residential. If it were to be annexed and come into the city, the city zone that corresponds to that plan designation is also called low-density residential, and that's what's being requested with the annexation. There is an existing single-family dwelling that's on the property today, and the reason for the annexation is due to a failed septic system. So in order for the property owner to be eligible for city sanitary sewer service, they need to be annexed inside the city limits to receive our city sewer services, so that's the purpose for this annexation. Just by way of orientation here, the property, it's a little hard to see that, because the blue is the suburban residential on this overhead map, but there's a blue outline around the parcel. Got a little pointer here, so I can show you. So, yeah, you can see this parcel right here. The property to the north of this is zoned residential multifamily. That is where the new apartments are being constructed, the South Town Apartments, and then just north of that, just to kind of orient you to this part of town, is where the new Monmouth Tower and Light offices are going. So the property is contiguous with the city limits on the northwest and east sides, and it's also located in our urban growth boundary. Slide just shows an aerial photograph of some of the surrounding uses. Property to the south is also in the UGB, but it's, has not been annexed, so that's still in the county. So as I mentioned, there's basically two approval criteria that the council's decision must be based on for the application. One is found in the Monmouth City Code, that's Chapter 18, Point 40, that's governing annexations. Basically, the criteria there speaks to whether or not the proposal is consistent with our comprehensive plan and our land use and urbanization elements of the plan. And then the Oregon Revised Statutes also has specific policy procedures that apply to how properties may be annexed. So those have to be contiguous to our state limits within our UGB and the owner's consent to that annexation. And so just a couple of my points to make. The findings in the report do show that the proposed annexation can meet these criteria. That urbanization element of the comprehensive plan speaks to whether or not there's adequate public facilities there to service the property. We received some comments that are included in your report from the Public Works Director stating that adequate public facilities are available and that it's the owner's cost to actually pay for the cost of hooking up to the city sewer, but it is available and stubbed to the property. So that is included as one of the recommended conditions. Warren Street does not currently meet city street standards adjacent to the property. There's no sidewalk, curb and gutter there right now, so as a condition of annexation, we're requesting that the owner sign a waiver of remonstrance that would state that in the event that a local improvement district is formed in the future to make those improvements to Warren Street, that they would participate in paying their fair share of their, based on their frontage of their property for those improvements. So it does meet the criteria for being contiguous to the city, located within the UGB, consistent with the comprehensive plan policy. And again, the request is being generated as a, as a need for the city sewer for failed septic, so staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions noted in the Public Works comments that I went over. Council has the options of approving the annexation as presented in the report, based on the findings of fact and with the recommended conditions, or amending the findings or the conditions. Council also, options include denial or continuing the hearing if you need more additional information. One thing I'll note to formally adopt the annexation, it doesn't need to be adopted by an ordinance, so if it's approved, we, staff would come back to you at your next meeting and have that ordinance prepared. And due to the, kind of the time sensitivity of the application of the failed septic and trying to get that fixed, we would include an emergency clause most likely in that to make it become effective immediately and do the first and second reading and combine in the same ordinance. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the application.
A question. If a local improvement district does arise, is the property owner obligated to vote in favor?
They would not be able to object to participating in the local improvement district.
Effectively, yes.
They have to vote. Do they have to vote in one way or another?
It's not so much a vote, they would have to, they would consent.
To whatever the, the results of the election are.
They would be counted as supporting a proposal to establish an LID.
Okay.
It's not a vote.
It's not a vote, yeah.
Well, it's a.
It does require, it does require the consent, that's right, yeah.
Fifty percent of the owners in the local improvement district have to approve it or it doesn't go forward, right?
And their, non-remonstrance means they, they agree that they will consent to the formation of an LID.
Okay, okay. All right. And Counselor Schinkel?
Yeah, and I should say, that's also binding on any successive owners as well. It's recorded, becomes attached as, as part of the title of the property.
Satellite image on page, well, whatever it is. It appears that the, the house is on two different lots.
Yes.
Is that gonna create any issues? Or need to be a lot line adjustment or anything like that?
I checked with the property owner as well, so this, this mapping program is, is not survey-level accuracy, it's just taking satellite imagery and the tax assessor's parcel records and overlaying them, so there's, we know there are mappers here, and so, yeah, the property's been recently surveyed, South Town Apartments has surveyed their property, so they were able to confirm that there isn't, it's not over the property line like it appears, so, but good question, good, good eye to catch that. Kind of had me startled there, too, when I said.
And Counselor Carey?
Are there any other instances where the property owner might be obligated to, I mean, you noted the local improvement district. Is there any other circumstance where they might be expected to pay for curb, gutter, sidewalk? Just for their own protection, I, you know, I'd want to make sure that.
Sure, to, to address that question. So the parcel is less than a half acre. The house, they, they're going through a beautiful remodeling process, and the way the house is positioned, I mean, it doesn't have really redevelopment potential to be able to divide it, to partition it further, and that's typically what would trigger.
That would be the trigger, yeah.
Some kind of exact, or conditions that they do, you know, street improvements. So, yeah, there's not another case that I can think of that would trigger.
I'm just more interested in their protection than, so I don't get a surprise.
That's a good point.
Yeah. And Counselor Lopez?
Please forgive me if I'm, if I'm fuzzy on the details, but isn't, isn't there a statute that, that if a certain, a certain amount of improvements happens on a property, that then they're obligated to, to create that, that sidewalk area? Would the work that they're doing on this as part of the remodel fall under that?
It would depend on the timing and where they get the building permits from, but you're, you're right, the city does have an ordinance that talks about when you do a certain dollar amount of improvements to a property that could trigger that sidewalk improvement. It's my understanding from the property owner that they're mostly through those remodeling improvements, so, but that's a good point, that there could be the case if they're doing some more major remodeling, adding on a second floor or a huge addition, that there could be something that triggers the, I believe that's written specifically to the sidewalk improvement, no, not the full.
Yes. That's just the sidewalk portion, but, thank you.
Yeah, sure, good question.
And I had a question. I know there's been some changes in Oregon law regarding annexation, and one of those is about the voters, right? And so I was reading some information in here, and I wanted to make sure I'm reading that correctly, about the kind of annexation that requires and shall be submitted to a vote of the city's electors, and it looks like this is one of those that's an exception to that.
Right, right.
So I just wanted you to address that and read that, make sure that.
That's correct, yes. A failed septic system is, is an exemption to the voter annexation. State laws, my understanding, 2016 was changed, though.
Yeah, the state has substantially preempted local votes on annexations, so this is not subject to that.
Okay, yeah. That's what I thought, I thought, gee, that was a, that was a pretty clear exception, right? Failing septic system.
Sure is.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so our next step is to have a presentation by the applicant, and so I understand, do we have applicants here?
They are here. I spoke to the property owner earlier today and sent a copy of the staff reports, and I don't believe there's any questions or concerns. Okay, okay, yeah, of how the non-remonstrance agreement works. So, yeah, they're, they're here, I guess if there's questions.
All right. And so, because this is public hearing, we do listen to the testimony of any persons in favor. If anyone would like to speak in favor of this annexation, they are welcome to come forward now and speak in favor of that. And seeing none, we also give the opportunity to persons in opposition, so if anyone is here to speak in opposition to this annexation, please step forward and identify yourself. And seeing none, we like these kind of hearings. So if anyone else has a comment, you are neither for nor against this particular petition, but have some other comment on this particular petition for annexation, you can get your say in now, so. Great, thank you. And any other testimony or comments? What else could there be? I'm just curious, how does that work?
Public agencies, yeah, I think just, if anybody else has anything they would like to say before you close it.
Other than thanking us for the cupcakes, we shall move on, and we don't have any rebuttal since we had no testimony, so. Any other questions by the commission? After we heard all that testimony, I think our answers are before us, so I am going to close the hearing. And we are actually now going to take a vote on this, right?
Allow me to move.
Oh, yes.
That the council approved annexation 18-01, subject to the conditions of approval found in Exhibit 3.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Carey and seconded by Counselor Belts to approve the annexation as presented. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Motion carries, the annexation is approved, and so we will have a resolution.
Yeah, there will be an ordinance at your next meeting, and Suzanne said it, this will be sort of a super emergency ordinance. It allows, the charter typically provides that an ordinance is adopted by first reading in one meeting, second reading in the next meeting. In this case, because of the nature of the emergency, the applicants have requested, and the ordinance will be drafted so that you can read it both first and second time at the same meeting with an emergency clause, which will make it effective on adoption at your next meeting, if it's a unanimous vote. The charter does require unanimous vote in order to do that first and second reading in one meeting. That's how we'll draft it, based on the result of the vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Shutterly, that's great information to have, so we shall look forward to that two weeks from tonight, when we have our next meeting.
Look forward to getting your toilets flown.
Yeah, sorry, it's so bureaucratic, it doesn't seem quite right that we have to wait that long, but thank you very much for your, I'm sure, well, I'll be looking for your vote next year. All right. I, it's after the vote, Lee, I can't say I can't. I, we have another hearing this evening, so we actually will move on to our second hearing, and again, this is a hearing that involves our Community Development Director Suzanne Dufner, so we will start with her staff report and go through the same process.
Okay, yes, a little bit shorter, I don't need to read the, the Oregon land use statement for the census as a street vacation, so, yes, so this is the staff report for street right-of-way vacation, case number 18-01. This is for a property that's located in the 1500 block of Monmouth Independence Highway, better known, I think, as, to us as the S-curves property for Ash Creek Station. If you'll recall, the council initiated the street vacation proceedings for this particular property in November, the November council meeting, and so now we have, and I kept saying, oh, we're gonna get to the merits of the proposal later, so this is later now, this is actual public hearing to discuss the merits of whether or not to officially approve the street vacation request. The property owner has indicated a need to vacate this property to help facilitate commercial development on the property. The street vacation involves two areas of the S-curves property. One is a sixteen-and-a-half-foot-wide alleyway that's on the northern portion of the, the property that stubs out to the Monmouth Independence Highway. The second area is what was known as Third Street, an undeveloped street that's approximately sixty feet, or sixty-five feet wide, and is on the, the southerly portion of the property abutting the Monmouth Mobile Home Village to the south. The Oregon Revised Statutes provides the criteria for how we are to vacate public right-of-way, does require a public hearing and adoption by an ordinance if it's, if approved. I also have an aerial photo to kind of show what's going on in, in this particular area. The property has an existing single-family dwelling on it that is eventually proposed for demolition to, again, facilitate commercial development on the property. There is a, an existing single-family dwelling to the east of the property that's outside city limits, but within a residential plan designation for the city of Monmouth, and next to that, you probably know Ware Mart is located a little bit further east of the property. To the north is Hogan Road, that's our Public Works shops, and the Dock Park, also located back there, so kind of have a mix of commercial, public, and residential uses in this area. So again, the criteria found in Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter 71, requires proper notice to be given. We did provide notice in the itemizer observer. The property has also been posted with two signs notifying a, a public hearing impacting this area, as well as we've sent out notice to the adjacent property owners by mail. The criteria is whether or not, for the council to consider is whether or not the street vacation request will prejudice the public hearing if it's approved, and again, that decision must be adopted by ordinance. So with that, just a couple of points to make, directed toward the, the approval criteria. Staff has not received any written or verbal notice objection to the proposed street vacation. We've had a lot of public inquiries about the, the property and how it's going to be developed, but we've also, staff's given notice to the various utility providers to see if there's any utilities that would be impacted by the proposed street vacation, and we do know that there are overhead power lines in the area known as the, the Third Street right-of-way, and there's also water lines in both of the areas proposed for vacation. So one of the conditions, if the street vacation's approved, is that we also obtain public utility easements to protect those lines and be able to, to get access and maintain those over time. In terms of access and circulation as another public interest that we look at compared to our plans for road improvements and, and street access, the property, I'll just go back to the aerial photo there, the, the two driveways have been set for access to the S-curves property when improvements were made by the, the property owner. Gosh, I think that was in, was it 2010, maybe somewhere in there? So based on where those driveways have been set, there is not room for a third access to come out, the spacing is just too close for our, our street access spacing standards, where Third Street could potentially come out there, so we don't know, we know we don't need it per our access spacing standards. However, I did note in the reports that as part of the subsequent steps for development, there'll be a design review, planning application that comes in with the specifics of the building layouts and, and parking and landscaping and such, and as part of that, we'll likely And as part of that, we'll likely want to see some kind of shared driveway or pedestrian connection to provide access to the east, since there is property that could be further developed. And it's a lot of out of direction travel to require everything to go up to the highway. So that is something that we'll be exploring and, and seeing how that works and with the development plan as part of a future application. With that, the staff findings show that the, the street vacation can meet the approval criteria. This is old platted right-of-way from the town of Talmage Plats that was done in the early nineteen hundreds. That was needed when there was a railroad line that connected Monmouth Independence. We don't unfortunately have that railroad. That would've been kind of cool to have that, but. Bring it back, yeah, so, so yeah, so staff is recommending approval of the right-of-way vacation. We do have a couple of conditions placed on there. Prior to the first reading of an ordinance to adopt it, that the, the owner in this case provide legal descriptions of the areas to be vacated, and then also the area needed for those public utility easements. And the cost for recording the, the ordinance adopting the street vacation be borne by the property owner that's benefiting from this, so. Pretty straightforward. With that, I'd be happy to, to answer any questions you might have about it.
Counselor Schinkel.
That is, are there, is, is, or what is the zoning in that, in that lot? Is it two separate, two separate types, given that it's?
Yeah, sorry, I, I didn't put the zoning map on here. The, actually, you can kind of see it on this map behind us.
So it's commercial, retail is the pink parcel, so all of this is commercial, retail. The owner also owns this piece on the corner of the highway and Edwards there. And that one's RM or medium density residential. That one could be subject to a future rezoning application, but that's not being, that hasn't been submitted at this point, so. Can that answer your question, or are you looking for zoning around?
Nope.
Since she stepped away from the mic, just for the record, then.
Yeah, okay, so the zoning is commercial retail for the entire site. It consists of multiple parcels. The owner also owns one parcel to the south on the corner of the highway in Edwards. That's multi-family or medium density residential.
All right, other questions? Counselor Kerry.
Just, I understand that the, the dwelling that's currently there is, is probably going to be vacated at some point. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
And it appears that, that sort of north-south piece, not the Third Street, but the other one seems to run right along the, what appears to be the driveway, a portion of the driveway in. If, just wondering about the timing of the vacancy of that. Would, would that create any problems for the people that are in there at the moment? Or if that right-of-way goes away?
The property owner that currently owns it owns all three of those, those parcels. So, so, no, they, they, there wouldn't be a need for an access easement because the property owner already owns that. Yeah, if it was a different property owner, that'd be a different situation, yeah.
As long as you're here, you can drive when the drive.
Right, right, but in this case, there's, I don't know, you probably can't see it from this map, but there's actually three parcels there, yeah, that it does cross some different parcel lines, so, yeah. But because it's all under one ownership, it's not a concern for this particular one.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, hearing none, then. We now move on to a presentation by the applicant. So I believe we have someone here to present on behalf of the applicant. If you would come to the microphone, please state your name and where you live.
Good evening, council, good evening, mayor, congratulations on your new appointment.
Thank you. If you could sit down, then you can speak into the mic, that would be great for our records.
I will, and I need to because I have a call.
Yes.
Are we good? No, thank you. And thanks Suzanne for having us over, appreciate it. We, uh.
So, name and where you're from.
Sorry, Paul Beals, two four five five River Road, southeast Salem, Oregon, nine seven three oh six. I'm an employee of White Oak Construction. And I am representing Jack Fox, the owner of the property tonight, as he is out of town. So I brought some, some items to discuss with, with the council to see what you think. So we, we are in agreement with everything regarding the staff report, but we do have a, a slight bit of concern over one area that is recommended in the staff report. And so I just wanted to share those concerns with, with you, the council, tonight so that you could kind of hear the, the perspective from our, from our side. We have presented several versions of development plans to, to your staff and have been working closely with your staff. And by the way, they're fantastic to work with. And we, we think we have a, a plan that's really gonna serve Monmouth well in the future. And I would like to say that I, I'm, I'm excited for Monmouth to have its own commercial area that will, you know, be a place for your citizens to come and, and enjoy and provide the services that they need locally, so they're not needing to go too far away to enjoy those services. So the, the only concern that we have with the staff report is the concept of that connectivity that Suzanne was discussing regarding connecting out of Third Street and connecting a pedestrian path behind the commercial development. So if I could orient, orient you, the, the lower thicker and long, and longer section that she's pointing out right there is the vacation that, that we are involved in here. And the staff report is asking that, they, they would likely recommend the applicant to provide a shared driveway connection that includes a pedestrian access within the vacated area at the time of design review. So doesn't necessarily affect us tonight regarding the idea of the vacation approval, but we would, we would like to address some of the concerns that come to our, our mind as a developer and about that connection. Let me pull my notes momentarily. Do I have a time limit? I don't see a clock or, okay. I'm used to a three-minute or a five-minute, so.
Right, but this is a hearing.
Get her done, so. I'm just, I'm just wondering, this really is an issue that will come up later in site design review. Yes. It's not ripe for the council to consider tonight. Okay. For the annexation. And I would, I would recommend that we defer this until it's, I was, yeah, that's right, vacation. I really would recommend we defer the discussion until you've got a staff report that presents the issues and it's been fully vetted through the Planning Commission. I think this is just premature to be talking about that alignment issue because that really is a development issue that will occur later, and it doesn't pertain to any of the criteria for the vacation of the right-of-way.
And, and we haven't seen that, so.
Right, right, you don't have anything on it, yeah.
So you don't have a site plan or anything?
No.
No, we have not.
No.
Yeah, I think it will, it will be better developed if it's done through the Planning Commission process.
Certainly.
Through site design.
Certainly.
Yeah. So you're not waiving anything by not arguing it tonight, it's just, it'll be for another day.
So that was my additional question, since we did have the legalese about airing things now.
Not, not tonight because it's not part of this, it's not criteria for this decision, yeah.
Okay, my only concern was that if staff was gonna recommend it in the future to address it today might help staff and, and council have a understanding of it, of it, and fully. But, sure.
Better conversation first with staff and then council, you can get it when it's been vetted.
Great.
Yep.
That will go to Planning Commission.
Correct.
Correct? So we will trust them to ask all the questions.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we want to get this going.
Happy New Years.
Anything else? Thank you very much, sir, appreciate that. And based on that, then we do have, have an opportunity to hear from any persons in favor of vacating, in other words, giving up our right to build a street there in the former town of Talmage. So if anybody would like to speak in favor of this particular matter before us. Seeing none, we will now hear from any persons in opposition to the vacation of the rights of these streets area through that property. And I see none of those. So any persons neither for nor against the vacation of Third Street in the S-curves. And any other testimony or comments with regard to this matter? All right, thank you. Seeing none, nothing for you to rebut, so we'll, we'll let you stay back there. And any additional questions that arisen? Nothing? Then I will close the hearing. And we do have a staff recommendation before us and a proposed motion, I will entertain that motion.
Well, I move that council approved right-of-way vacation eighteen dash oh one, subject to the conditions recommended by staff.
It's second.
Moved by Counsel Belts and seconded by Counsel Lopez. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excellent, and opposed? So we will move that forward and, and again, does this, we, and an ordinance?
You'll get an ordinance back, yeah.
We'll get an ordinance back on this one at our next meeting for, and that will.
Or whenever we have the property description, and there, there may be a little bit more to do on this one before you get it back.
Okay, so that will not necessarily be the other thing.
Could be, but, yeah.
Right, thank you very much, appreciate that information. And like I say, there's a lot of excitement and enthusiasm around that, so we're all glad to get more information. Our third item on the business agenda tonight is a review of our senior center rental fees. So we are going to get a presentation on that by Ms. Barbara Hogan and see if we can't kind of get those things caught up with the current state of our beautiful senior center, so. Barbara, thank you.
Hi, my name's Barbara Hogan, I'm the director at the Monmouth Senior Center. Thank you for having me here today to discuss this. As many, many of you know, we had an addition that was completed at the senior center in August of twenty seventeen was the ribbon cutting, I believe, I think so. And they, with that, we gained two large new classrooms. And as such, we have had opportunities to, for renters to use multiple rooms in our facility or our whole facility, whereas in the past, our rental rates were just for the entire facility as it was. So the proposed changes that were discussed in a few meetings with the senior advisory board allow for any combinations of those rooms as renters would need to use them. Not everybody needs our largest spaces for everything that they do. And I welcome any questions that you have about what you have in front of you.
Questions for Barbara? Yes, Counsel Lopez.
Hello, Barbara, thank you for being here tonight. Have you received any feedback regarding, regarding the proposed change in rates from those that are currently utilizing the senior center?
We have a lot of one-time renters, and we have a lot of people who are loyal and regular renters, those of which I have brought about a little bit of discussion when they rented it more recently in the late summer and fall, that there was a potential for in the new year, a, a proposed change to that. The one thing I would like you to be aware of is the main type of rental we have is our multipurpose room, our large, our large room in the center of the building. That particular rate will not be changing at all. I simply went up slightly and down slightly based on adding more space to the rental or less space. So I did make them aware of the fact that that would not be any sort of a drastic change, but that there could be potential if they needed, for example, to use our other large classroom as overflow for a large party. Sometimes they'll also have, you know, a kids' room and an adults' room, that kind of thing for, for a large gathering. That would be just slightly different in the rental costs based on that. And the feedback that I have gotten from a few of our regular renters was that they were not surprised by that in the slightest. They assumed that with the addition of new rooms, there was a potential for that and didn't seem to be phased by it much, so, yeah.
And, and for, for clarity, these, the, the new fee schedule, the new rate schedule, more than anything makes the, the rental of those spaces more flexible and allows the fee to scale as, as a space needs scale.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Counsel Belts?
Do I, do I read this correctly, that one of the changes from the previous resolution, which was eighteen fifty, is that now you haven't made the differentiation between using the kitchen or not using the kitchen? You've simply said fifteen dollar per hour to use the kitchen?
Correct.
Okay, and I'm, I'm assuming that just makes sense because I've been in the facility and it's, you're either going to use it or you're not.
Correct.
Okay, so good, yeah, I think that makes it much easier for someone looking for a rental to, to know that that's okay.
I've also had rentals happen where they just use the kitchen for the first hour of the event and then continue to gather and play games and things like that without using the kitchen. So they've cleaned up, done everything they need to do, and then they're just using the rest of the facility for the rest of their rental.
Makes complete sense.
Other questions? I'm just, what, what kind of groups, what kind of people, what, what events do we host there? I know it's a pretty active place.
It's varied, it's, it's a lot of citizens gathering for birthdays, anniversaries. We've had several celebration of life services there. And people from all over the valley, not just Monmouth and Independence, have used our facility. Specifically, people that have had a mem, a loved one that was a member of our community, but maybe that particular person doing the rental is from out of town. We've had a lot of people come and enjoy our facility, so.
We know people are always looking for some of those sorts of gathering spaces, so this kind of nice, clear rental schedule, so people can get an idea of what's available and how they can use the, the building for classes or, or events is great. Are there any other questions? Yes.
What kind of an increase does this represent? I can't tell what the original was and what the new is. I can see what the new is, but what kind of an uptick do we have here?
From our, well, for example, the, the main rental that I usually have is just the multipurpose room, where it says sixty dollars for the first two hours or a fraction thereof, and twenty dollars per additional hour and fraction thereof. That is exactly the same as it was in the old fee schedule. So like I said, the, the main type of rental that I have probably seventy, eighty percent of the time isn't going to be changing at all.
It would be, I mean, and I'm all for this, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm a yes, but, but it would be helpful as we consider these things if we're, because we're all sort of looking out for the costs that, you know, the people have and so on, to be able to say sort of a before and after, you know.
Yeah.
And I know you've done more than that, you split out individual rooms and all of that. Just, it would be, it would be helpful and, and, and we've talked, so this isn't new. And it doesn't affect how I feel or how I will ultimately vote on this, but something just doesn't feel right about a, a one rate for a nonprofit and another rate for a private. To me, you know, you're using the facility and I understand the, the rationale for the nonprofits, but if you can have a kid's birthday party, I don't make any revenue either. So it's just kind of my deal. I mean, I'm, you know, I, and I know that's legacy, that's been there.
Yeah.
We're not gonna try to recreate the will, but it just, it doesn't feel right in my time, so.
It's also standard practice, the school district does the same. So it's an interesting, I'm not sure if that's common with all government agencies, but it actually is a factor in our rental, the school district.
Sure.
Did you have anything?
Um, I had a question too. Are there groups that aren't charged for the use of the senior center? Like for instance, the orchestra that performed a winter concert there in December, did they have to pay?
If it is something that is. If it is something that is part of the community that, that benefits the senior center directly and its members, then no.
Okay.
But if it's a private group coming in that's going to take away space, then yes.
And I would often arrive early for the tree board meeting just so that I could participate with the hymn singing group. Is a little group like that, maybe a couple people with guitars and six people in the audience, they don't have to pay $50 an hour, do they?
Oh, not at all, no.
Okay, good.
Because again, that was something that anybody from the senior center could come and participate in.
Okay, good.
These are for events, like I, I wouldn't necessarily want any member, you know, of the community coming in and joining in on my birthday party, you know? So if they're, if you're actually going to be closed for a private event, then that's where these rental things come.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Byron?
So nonprofits, pretty, pretty obvious what that means. Individual, or private, I'm assuming, does that still mean just individuals? Are we still excluding for-profits to be able to rent it at all?
To my knowledge, yes.
So if somebody wanted to teach a class for which they'd be charging their participants or charging a fee, a money-making venture in effect, then would that be considered private use or they would not be eligible?
We haven't typically done that type of thing. The only instances where someone would be teaching a class, it would be available to members of the senior center.
As a member, as a part of the senior center program.
But wouldn't necessarily fall under rentals, yeah.
But if a for-profit business wanted to use the space to do a training, to train their staff or something like that, they would not be allowed to do that?
Correct, yeah. I've not had that come up.
We'll see if we have demand for that, then you never know.
I have not had demand for that ever.
This resolution doesn't change anything in that respect.
Right.
And, and that's a policy decision because the main thing is that those things are in demand and then all of a sudden, if you go too far that direction, then you can't do your, your programming for the center with, with your main mission is. Now you're detracting from the main mission to let private parties use that facility.
Well, but the, the facility still gets to control when they do those things, regardless of the policy, right? So I don't think that's a problem.
So the item before us then, if that's all the questions, is an actual resolution and that will be resolution number 1877. It will include not only the room rates we've been talking about, but just so folks know, there are some other fees on there, security and cleaning deposit, which isn't changing either, it doesn't look like, and some fees for faxing, photocopies and records and research. I'm not sure if that's just pertaining to the senior center. I think that's one of our standard fees that each department is able to charge in case they're requested that. So I would entertain a motion for resolution 1877, adopting miscellaneous senior center fees and repealing conflicting provisions.
I so moved to approve resolution 1877, a resolution adopting miscellaneous senior center fees and repealing conflicting provisions.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Lopez and seconded by the senior center representative, Counselor Silbernagle, to adopt this resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, sorry. It's a money thing. Money things.
You just do resolutions and ordinance, it's high roll.
Counselor Silbernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Belts?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Schinkel?
Yes.
Counselor Lopez?
Aye.
Counselor Sharmer?
Yes.
All right, and so that passes. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Barbara. So go forth and find, get people in there using that awesome place. All right, and that brings us to council comments. So if any of you would like to have anything to share with us this evening, please do so. And Counselor Sharmer?
I would like to welcome you and Roxanne on, and congratulate Roxanne on her reelection and welcome Counselor Lopez. It's a wonderful evening here for all of us and the reelection of landslide Carey here. And, and I, and on to more serious matter, I would like to remind us all that I would like us to consider in the future to determine a policy or procedure for how we as a council may respond to citizens of the community who, who either write to us, send us emails or need to be in touch with us. And also another thing, I would like a better way of knowing whether or not to click on a link that comes in an email to our, our council email address. I haven't clicked on anything. I may have missed out on a lot of stuff, but I don't click on anything.
Yeah, those are tricky. It's just, we're all cybersecurity is the issue for all of us, right? So you feel even a little more responsible for the, the city's email system, so that's great. And I think that's a great discussion point for us. I would like to note, we do have our city council planning retreat coming up and I think one of the things I really want to discuss is, is our agreements about communication, how we communicate with each other, how we communicate with staff back and forth and the public. So that's a great point. I will add that to my mental agenda. Thank you. Other council comments?
I would, I would like to, to make a brief comment. Going back and noticing that, that the traffic safety commission did not meet this quarter, which is a commission that, that only meets quarterly. And I, if I understand correctly, one of the reasons that they did not meet was because they did not have enough, enough for a quorum. Is that correct?
That is not my understanding.
Or, that was not the understanding?
We could ask Chief Talon, he is here.
We had no agenda items, no, would that be?
No agenda items, gotcha.
We were available, it was just there, there wasn't anything to chat about.
Well, I, I would, I would encourage everybody and take, take an opportunity, since we do have a room that is slightly more full than, than normal, to please, please continue to come to these. Please keep us all, all honest and responsible and responsive and, and please take advantage of some of the boards and commissions that are available. I know that quite a few of them do have openings, a number of them do not have quorums and, and we need your, we need your help everywhere that you're available. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. And speaking of boards and commissions, I, I know they have meetings coming up and some of you, some of them have council liaisons and some of their council liaisons left us tonight, so I'm going to try and get those, double check with everybody. I think I've talked to several of you about what you'd like to do. Try and get those appointments made so that we can staff those as liaisons and listeners and keep our boards and commissions supported. So I should have that here in the next day or two for you. So thank you. I want to thank everyone for coordinating our colors this evening. I think the blue and the blacks and. At last we have a woman mayor who cares about those, right? It's important even to fill us and I just, I just want to say, I'm just.
Men care about these things.
If I were, if I were, if we could, blue, black, blue, black, we, yeah.
And, and as Counselor Sharmer pointed out, we are boy, girl, boy, girl, boy, girl, boy, girl. So thank you, and yes, even Suzanne, thank you, who were also coordinated this evening and I really, just, and Chief Talon, always wearing navy. I love it. So I think, I think that's it.
I think we get to take a break.
So I would like to adjourn the council meeting of January 8th, 2019.
To work session.